Good evening and welcome. The February 5th, 2018 Board of Commissioners meeting is now in session. The Reverend Susan Fletcher has been kind enough to come forward and give us the invocation and pledge allegiance if you could all rise.
Let us pray. Father God, we give you thanks and praise for the gift of this day. We thank you for all that you have spoken into being, for all that you have guarded, for all the things that you have entrusted to us as stewards of your kingdom. As we gather here tonight, we are acutely aware of the responsibilities of guardianship for your kingdom. We ask your hand to be upon those who sit in positions of authority in this county. Give them wisdom, give them discernment, give them faith, and give them courage that they might make decisions that would benefit all your people for the good of your kingdom. We thank you for this good land. May our work give honor and glory to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
And if you will join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you Reverend Fletcher. Reverend Slater, I apologize. Moving on to approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I have one item that I believe the applicant and I have discussed that we needed to postpone till our next meeting. Does the applicant need to stay here until we get to that point, or can we make that change on the agenda?
We can remove that as an agenda item, correct?
Yes, you may amend your agenda if you so choose.
Okay. Item B under public hearing is the one that I'm referring to.
Public hearing B. I'm just checking with the attorney, being since there's an advertisement requirement, if we're not better off going ahead and extending that to a date in time certain.
Yes, you won't, if you're gonna, yeah, given that that's been advertised for public hearing, you, rather than re-advertise it again and incur that cost, it'd be better to continue it to a date, date certain for its hearing.
Okay, then I'd like to remove item being continuity to the 19th of February.
Yes. Any other changes to the agenda? Open the floor for a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public comments. We've got a few folks signed up for public comment this evening. If you would, be respectful of others and please keep your comments to three minutes. There is a timer up there. Green means go, red means stop. So with that, I will call the first person, Stuart Baldwin. If you would, state your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Do I need to push this button already?
No, sir, they'll do it for you.
My name is Stuart Baldwin. I'm a permanent resident here in Grandy. 155 Charleston Drive, Grandy. I don't really have a whole lot to say as much as I have some questions to ask. I'm a permanent resident area. I'm retired from a local building supply company here in town and I enjoy fishing a lot. In particular, I like driving up on North Kurutuck beaches in the fall. And I'm most concerned about an article I saw in the paper recently that where you guys are gonna have a beach driving permit, but it seemed kinda ambiguous. I wasn't sure if there was any conclusions in the paper, that's why I'm here.
Mr. Baldwin, if I could?
Yeah.
The beach driving permit, we don't have final language for that yet. It's coming till our next meeting. I will tell you, permit.
Parking, it's not driving.
I'm sorry. Beach parking permit.
No, I'm not concerned about parking unless I have to stop to fish. I mean, I don't know if that's what you call parking.
But local residents are gonna need to...
Right, your pass, you won't have to pay for your pass.
You're local, so you...
Your local, it will be a no-fee pass to all residents and property owners.
Well, hallelujah for that, but I'd just like to learn more about it. Is that gonna be at your next meeting?
Yes, sir, it will.
Uh-huh. All right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And when is that?
February 19th.
February 19th.
Yes, sir. Ed Cornet?
Oh, great. My name's Ed Cornet. I live at 1209 Atlantic Avenue in Corolla. I've been a permanent resident here for about 10 years and own property here for going on 25. Before retiring to the Kurutuck Outer Banks, I spent 20 years at Booz Allen, helping businesses succeed. I spent six years at the Carolina Business School, teaching MBA students. I guided them as they applied their skills to help local troubled North Carolina business. What I know is that businesses get in trouble when their management does not pay attention to the hard data that their businesses produce and instead are misguided by their hopes and hypes about what's happening. Shareholders suffer. The business only gets out of trouble when the Board of Directors makes management face up to reality and insists on open debate on the best path forward. For county government, the shareholders are the taxpayers, and the Board of Directors are the commissioners. Like a business, a county is successful if it takes good advantage of its assets, understands its competitive situation, and makes solid investment decisions. When successful, county tax rates remain low and its citizens receive well-managed services. Each of you has volunteered to help our citizens by serving on the Board of Directors. I thank you for your service and know that you're trying to do the best job that you can, making decisions for the good of the county based on the best information you have. On the screen, I thought I pointed at something. On the screen is one of the county's history of the property tax rates. In the 1990s, our 64 cent rate was near the state average, but during this period, several thousand people, like myself, built vacation rental homes, investing almost $5 billion, billion dollars in COBX. By 2005, the county could cut its tax rate in half, saving mainland taxpayers nearly millions a year, several million a year for the same level of service. These savings for mainland taxpayers are because of the double leverage of COBX. First, because of the rentals, the high property values, they contribute, COBX contributes more than 60% of county tax revenues. Second, and also very important, since most owners don't live there, COBX requires less than 10 percent... Where am I pointing this? Yeah, that's the next one. Less than 10% of the total cost. Next. By 2013, at the same time trouble was brewing, well, for example, on the cost, public education is 20% of the county's general budget, and of the 4,000 students in the schools, only 40 come from the Outer Banks. At the same time trouble was brewing, by 2005, investments slowed... Where am I supposed to point this?
Mr. Cornet, if I can, you're running out of time.
All right.
Apologize.
Let me quickly go through these slides. I think they tell the story. Beach erosion, crowding. Lost homes, next, last, and tougher competition. You as a board need to get the facts into the open. Our competition is getting tougher. Make management engage in an open debate, discussing both the problems and the possible solutions. And unless they propose realistic actions on crowding and beach nourishment, mainland taxpayers should prepare to spend a few million more each year for the same county service in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornet. Doris Flora?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's nice to be back here again. Hope everybody had nice holidays and everything. Thank you so much for letting me have a time here. I worked on the Mooyam small area planning for probably 18 months, and that was working with the, one of the projects was to have a park in Mooyam. Last year, probably about 12 months or so ago, we had planning, we went to where they had set up what it was gonna look like, what they were gonna have in it, and as of today, I don't think a shovel has hit the ground. We do work hard to have this, and we really need it. Number one, that area is really growing. It's a nice area. Everything has been projected to have it to go from one development to the next, to the next, to the next, and that is really great. But we really need that park. Every time I go to Foodline Store, somebody's gonna stop me and ask me, "Well, where's our park? Where's our park?" So I thought maybe I would kinda say a little bit about it and bring it to the forefront again. Thank you for letting me have a time to speak.
And Ms. Flora, Mr. Scanlon, can you speak to where we are with the park right now? I know we're in preliminary drawings and engineering, but we do have...
I think we had a work session a couple months ago where the staff brought back to the board the civil engineering plans for that park. I believe the cost estimate was somewhere in the $6 million range for the 24, 25 acre development, and so it's a matter now as we go into the budget process to start to identify funds to move that project forward. So at this time, it's a funding issue.
So Ms. Flora, we are in the process, and I assure you that this is not gonna go on the...
I understand the process, but I'm getting older. Maybe I'm hoping that I'll get a chance to walk in that park, you know? I have a birthday coming up here shortly. A little thing that I'm gonna bring up that somebody said a long time ago, and you might know what the reference is. It's gonna happen, but when is it gonna happen? What you're doing is waiting for me to die, but God says it's not, "I don't want you right now," and the devil doesn't want me either. So, but I would like to walk in the park, okay?
Well, we'll see what we can do to ensure that we get that expedited for you, okay?
Thank you, Ms. Flora. That's all I have signed up for public comments. Is there anyone that came in late that would like to speak this evening? And with that, I will close the public comments. Moving on, public hearings, PB 13-29, TFP LLC. The subject property located at 1149 Persimmon Street, Corolla, North Carolina, is zone conditional business, subject to a conceptual development plan that allows construction of a 10-bedroom inn. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the conditional zoning to allow construction of a 12-bedroom inn. And with that, I'll hand it over to Ms. LaCicero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The case before you tonight is an amended conditional zoning case. So I'm gonna go through the property. The property is located at the corner of Corolla Village Road and Persimmon Street. It is a conditional general business, and there is a conceptual plan approved for a 10-bedroom inn at this location. By the zoning map, you can see surrounding it is single-family Outer Banks and some PUD zoning. It is also in the Corolla Small Area Plan. It is in a full-service area. So a little bit of background, in 2014, there was an approval for a 10-bedroom inn. Now, the applicant would like, is coming back and asking for a 12-bedroom inn with a new driveway configuration. It is, the parcel size is 1.35 acres, and as you can see here, it's gonna have an ingress and egress off of Corolla Village Road, and the flow would be here and then onto Persimmon Street with the parking, stormwater right here, some parking in this area. And these are the elevations that the applicant has submitted for the, so the applicant is now requesting 12 bedrooms, but because of the conditional zoning, they're restricted to 10 bedrooms. So these are some of the elevations that the applicant has permitted, I mean, has submitted for the inn. And this is going to be an inn, not a bed and breakfast. It is gonna be, it is gonna be a business and not a single-family home. Planning Board and TRC did approve this change, as did Planning Board. With the conditions of approval that is in your agenda packet, Planning Board was concerned about the maintenance of Persimmon Street. And now I'll take any questions that the board may have for me.
Ms. LaCicero, how many, I may have overlooked it. What's the additional square footage gonna be for this? Are they adding?
I don't think there's gonna be much additional square footage.
So they're just kinda modifying the room sizes a little bit? Okay.
Yes.
And Ms. LaCicero, I guess the Persimmon Street thing isn't really part of our purview because that's a private road, right? That was just kinda one of the things that they were talking about was maintenance of that road.
Correct. It's a privately maintained road, and we're not allowed to do, require off-site improvement. The Planning Board was just concerned because it is a sand road and just the maintenance of it and the additional wear and tear is gonna be on that road for a business being located in this area.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know the square footage of the home compared to the other ones around it? I mean, the other ones are around anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000, I think.
The inn.
The inn, yes.
The next closest building is the church, which is pretty good size.
That may be a question that the applicant could answer, the final square footage on that. I'm looking through...
We haven't had any feedback from the residents around it saying it doesn't fit into the neighborhood or it doesn't meet with, you know, I don't see any negative comments at all on here.
We did have a resident at the Planning Board voice some concern about just having a business located in the village area, some concern about that. And the applicant may be able to answer some questions about concerns that came up during the community meeting. Concerns about just noise and maintenance of the road are really the major issues.
Thank you. It's my understanding that they already have a permit, they're just amending the permit, correct?
Correct. They do have a permit, conditional general business approval to build a 10-bedroom inn. They are coming back and requesting now a 12-bedroom inn.
So if we didn't do anything, they still can do the 10-bedroom?
Correct. If you don't do anything, they got the initial approval in January of 2014?
Any further questions for Ms. LaCicero? Is there an applicant coming forward to speak that isn't signed up for the public hearing?
I'm signed up.
Okay. Would you like to come forward first?
Yes, sir.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Pat Hudson. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Pat Hudson. I'm an attorney.
If you could, if you could, if there's no further questions for Ms. LaCicero, at this time, I'll open the public hearing. If you would now, sir.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Pat Hudson. I'm an attorney in Kitty Hawk. I represent TFP LLC, the applicant in this case. Just to preliminarily address a couple of the questions, we're, the square footage isn't changing. We're asking to change from a 10-bedroom to a 12-bedroom, Mr. Payment, in response to your question, frankly, because it's more bang for our buck. I have with me Kathleen Saunders and Mike Strater from Quibb and Associates, and they can answer any questions that you guys might have or that anyone may have regarding any of the technical issues.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson. Next person I will call be Mike Strater. You're not Mike Strater.
I'm not Mike. I'm Kathleen. I'm the next one down. I'm just gonna speak for Quibb. Do I need to swear in, or we're good?
No, ma'am, you don't. This isn't a quasi-judicial hearing, so all you need to do is say what you gotta say.
All right. My name is Kathleen Saunders. I'm a professional engineer with Quibb and Associates. We have been hired to do the engineering for the Corolla Village Inn site plan, as well as the conditional rezoning. What you have before you tonight is conditional rezoning. What we are trying to do is go from a 10-unit inn to a 12-unit inn. As Lori said, it was previously approved in 2014, and the reason we're doing that is just because it's more economically feasible. Once they got into the building design, they just shifted some things around to make it 12 units instead of 10, to address some of the other concerns that have been brought up about not having someone on staff 24/7. The owner also has an emergency contact information number that they'd be willing to share with locals in the area so that they could call that number because they are concerned with safety and, of course, would like to be proactive in allowing people to contact them if they have any issues. There are not any off-site improvements proposed at this time, and all of the previously required conditions within the 2014 approval will be met with this conditional rezoning. Are there any other technical questions that you'd like me to answer?
I guess not, maybe not a technical one, but since you brought up the aftermarket thing, after hours, I would assume that the proprietors are gonna run it. If they have guests there, they have a way to get in someone, contact with someone. I don't know if you can speak to that or not, so...
I do know they'll have an emergency contact number.
That's good enough.
Other won't change anything that's going on with it. This is a hotel, so it's not like if in the middle of the night I get hungry, I go down to the kitchen and fry me an egg. You know, this is gonna be just like a hotel. If I want something, is there a staff or is there an area to eat in there or anything?
I think the conditions of the inn, it does not have a kitchen on site, but there would also be that emergency number that they could call if they needed someone.
Okay, you've answered mine.
Any further questions for Ms. Saunders? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
I will call Scott Austin.
My name's Scott Austin. I live at 1064 Corolla Drive. Family's a longtime resident, Corolla. I don't have no problem with it being a 12-bedroom inn. What I have a problem with is the letters I've received, assuming this was a bed and breakfast as stated on the letters, especially for the community thing. They said nothing about an inn. Says right here in this letter, "A bed and breakfast." That's fine with me. That means there's somebody on staff at all times. A hotel in a village, I do not see where that is village atmosphere. I mean, this is an unmanned hotel, and that's my basic complaint here. I think I've been hoodooed. I was fine with a bed and breakfast. That's a different entity than a hotel. And here on this letter, I have from Quibb. That's all it states. It does not even state "inn," which I found is splitting hairs. And really, that's all I have to say.
Can we see your letter?
Ms. LaCicero, back in 2014, was it for, did it state an inn or a bed and breakfast back in 14, in 2014?
They asked for the conditional general business to be an inn. A bed and breakfast is, if it's done within a single-family home, they would not have to come before the board. If it was a single-family, like, single-family Outer Banks or single-family mainland zoning, they would not have to come before the board for an approval. That would be, it would be done with a zoning permit. So they came in 2014, 2013 and 14, because it was January, they came and presented it as a business. And I'm looking, I'm trying to look at the, yeah, and so a general, conditional general business, the letter here, a 10-bedroom bed and breakfast on the property. So although it's a little misleading with a 10-bedroom bed and breakfast, they would not have to, like I said, they would not have to come for rezoning for a bed and breakfast if it was a single-family residential.
Back in 2014, I'm gonna, I don't know, you were probably on the board back then, but was it, I don't know if you were in there or not, Paul. Was it, was there any discussion in the notes anywhere that this was gonna be unmanned back then or manned before, when it was approved?
I don't recall that being a...
I ask you that question coming up.
At the community meetings, which I attended all of them, that was never discussed, digging a hotel, always bed and breakfast. Originally, I talked with Mr. Twitty and Sharon Twitty, and they at one time were proposing a 23-bedroom bed and breakfast. Maybe they said slashed inn, which I assumed inn was a bed and breakfast, but I come to find out in the planning meetings last week that inn is just terminology that's in the sense of chef. And I find it very misleading because an unmanned hotel is, I'm gonna be the closest neighbor, I'm the one that's gonna have to call. Why should I be responsible to maintain their building? Are they gonna do me a profit every time I call to maintain it? That's what really bothers me. I was misled. Bed and breakfast is fine, a hotel, no.
Mr. Austin, did you say your address is 1064 Corolla Drive?
It is right now. I'm getting ready to build my retirement home on 1208, probably 2020.
Mr. Chairman, on page 71 of our agenda package, the letter states here that it's a 10-bedroom bed and breakfast, and that's stated November the 2nd, 2017.
Right, that's what the letter he just showed us. Okay.
And I think his concern was that...
it, was there any discussion in the notes anywhere that, that this was gonna be unmanned back then, or manned before, when it was approved?
I don't recall that being a...
I ask you that question coming up.
At the community meetings, which I attended all of them, that was never discussed, being a hotel, always bed and breakfast. Originally, I talked with Mr. Twitty and Sharon Twitty, and they at one time were proposing a 23-bedroom bed and breakfast. Maybe they said slashed inn, which I assumed inn was a bed and breakfast, but I kind of found out in the planning meetings last week, that inn is just terminology in a sense of the chat. And I find it very misleading, because an unmanned hotel is, I'm gonna be the closest neighbor, I'm the one that's gonna have to call. Why should I be responsible to maintain their building? Are they gonna do any profit every time I call to maintain it? That's, that's what really bothers me, I was misled. Bed and breakfast is fine, a hotel, no.
Mr. Austin, did you say your address is 1064 Corolla Drive?
It is right now, I'm getting ready to build my retirement home on 12/8. Probably a 20.
Mr. Chairman, on page 71 of our agenda package, the letter states here that it's a 10-bedroom bed and breakfast, and that it stayed in November the 2nd, 2017.
What he just showed us.
Right, that's what the letter he just showed us. Okay.
And I think his concern was that...
It's not a B and B.
It's not a B and B, but for it to be a business, it had to come before this board, and there was no discussions about being manned or unmanned. And I think that's the concern right now, is that it might be too late, but that, it has come through my attention on the last community meeting, that it's gonna be an unmanned hotel. But it's still being referred to as bed and breakfast. I did not know if y'all were clear on this.
Ms. LaCicero, if you could go back to the statement you made about if they were a 10-bedroom bed and breakfast, would they not have to come before this board to build that bed and breakfast?
If it was zoned, single-family Outer Banks, which originally, I'm trying to look through the thing, it was originally zoned, a single-family Outer Banks, they would not have to, under the way that ordinance is written now, they would not have to come before the board for approval for bed and breakfast.
So essentially, they could build a big house and run it as a B and B?
They could.
Right.
As long as there was someone, the proprietor was in residence there.
That lived in residence, right.
And this doesn't have a kitchen?
Well, that, well, that's the nature of an inn, so.
I recall they were like, mini refrigerators, I'm, I'm going back trying to look at mine.
Well, do we have someone from Twitty here to answer some questions, maybe? Ms. Hagley, Spencer?
Mr. Twitty, if you could come up? Mr. Austin, do you have anything further?
No, that's basically it. I just feel that I was misled in this whole situation.
Thank you.
My name's Hadley Twitty, I'll be running the inn, and I can try and answer any questions that have come up. Just to start out with, you know, in, in 2014, I believe, when we originally got approval, it was stated as an inn at that approval. So, right from the get-go. So now we're, we're trying to amend it to 12 bedrooms from a 10-bedroom inn. I understand that he's concerned about the noise, I completely get, you know, being a neighbor. We certainly have no hopes that there will be loud noises coming from the building. If there are, they're going to upset the other guests. On our end, that's not a good business plan. If our guests are saying, hey, this place is rowdy and noisy, they're gonna go somewhere else. They're coming to the village because they're hoping it's gonna be quiet. It's not gonna be unmanned, there's gonna be somebody there a significant portion of the day, drawn into the plans. There's even a place that if somebody needed to spend the night, they'd be able to. So if we felt like, hey, this, this group that just checked in looked like they could get a little out of hand, somebody can stay there, with that in mind. But, like I said, this is, this is not a goal. This has no pool, this has no hot tub, this has no outdoor sound system, all of which a normal, single-family home could have, and could create a lot more noise, especially with no one there ever. So.
So I guess the question that keeps coming back to, two things. One, assuming that B and B is just a misprint or was thrown in there, the staffing question is probably the biggest thing that people are coming to. So, you're gonna run an inn, and I have a little experience with that, but I'm guessing that you would have somebody there most of the day, throughout your check-in time, and your procedure's in place if someone's gonna be a late arrival to deal with that.
And it's pretty standard with ins, you know, in, in researching this, we've talked with a lot of people, people who have ins and manios, it's the same kind of thing. They go home at night, after-hours emergency number. I said, what's your number-one call? In my head, I'm like, is it rowdy guests? And they said, getting locked out of the room. That's, they were like, really? That's, if we get an after-hours call in a small inn, that's usually what it is.
What are your hours of operation for someone being there?
I don't think we have even set that up yet. I mean, we're in the approval stage. So, you know, well, like I said, we're, we're trying to run a successful business, so we'll do whatever is most successful for the business.
I got a question for Ms. LaCicero, then. Under the special use permit, if, if an applicant receives multiple violations of some sort continuously without being addressed, can this board then take action then to, to remove the special use permit?
Yes, for a special use permit, but this is a conditional rezoning.
Oh, 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 okay, then we couldn't do anything after the fact, then, okay.
Well, they would still have to, you know, the, the noise ordinance would still apply to them. Any other nuisance ordinance would still apply to them.
It's still, okay.
What, if, if that does happen, what recourse do we have as a board?
If they don't meet the noise ordinance, the sheriff's department would respond.
Would that be a civil citation, or would that be?
That, that, well, it could be, I think we've, I think we've converted the noise ordinance to a civil citation, so it'd be a civil citation. Notice of violation and civil citation.
But over, if, if a certain amount of things happen there that it's an issue, do we have the ability to remove that special use permit?
This is not a special use permit.
That's right, that's right.
This is a, this is a, this is a zoning, a zoning, or map amendment, so you would not have the ability to, to rescind the map amendment.
I got it.
Based on that type of activity.
And you're not, from the looks of it, it doesn't look like there's a whole lot of outside gathering areas, just porches and stuff. So you guys are pretty good neighbors.
I mean, at this point, the loudest business in the village is a bar that's out by, you know, the post office, and if anybody's getting noise complaints, it's, it's the bar with the outdoor music. So I think, I think our inn is gonna be the, on the quiet side. If anything, I'm worried about our guests complaining about the music from the bar.
Right, we're getting back from the bar.
Okay.
And as you said, you will be taking in, in each room will have a 24-hour number that, a guest such as, whether it's a lockout, or whether they wanna complain to you about the noise.
Yeah. I mean, really, if you have, you know, two guests in there that are being really loud, I think I'm gonna get 11 other calls before I get Mr. Austin's call from saying, hey, there's a really loud person here keeping me up.
Ms. LaCicero, are we allowed to establish any times for them to be in operation, to have, for it to be manned, not in a zoning?
I don't think so, not with the conditional zoning.
Okay.
With conditional zoning, of course, you may place conditions upon the zoning, but those conditions have to be agreed upon by the applicant and by the county. If the applicant were to say no to any condition the board might want to add, then your options would be to go ahead and approve it as presented, or to deny the, the application based upon the applicant's unwillingness to agree to a condition. So that, that's your options before, that is the option before you now.
So the office does have the ability to be, not just a night clerk, but somebody who could stay overnight, get the style changes?
And the style changes, there's a little staff quarter room up, kinda tucked away, designed to have a bed, and I think on the plans, it even has a shower and a bathroom. So it's designed to be self-contained, should somebody need to be there outside of what we would constitute regular business hours.
And you haven't had any discussions on what you think business hours would be there?
Honestly, no, sir. I mean, it's, this is a learning curve for me, so we're just going step by step, and my idea is to, to go to other people who have been successful and say, what works for you, and hopefully apply that to myself.
Ms. Twitty, what I'm envisioning is kind of associated with like time shares, where there's a lock box that, you know, a renter would get a code to that box, and that's how they would get their keys if it was an after-hours. Many of your rental properties, I mean, I've traveled throughout the country, and, and that's kinda how it's worked. It's not necessarily a desk that's manned, but they, just like your rental offices, I mean, you have...
Or keyless entry. You could even just text them, you know, hey, I forgot my code, and you can just send it. They can put their phone right up to it. So, I mean, we've, we've looked at some different options.
Yeah, and, and looking back in the notes from 14, we did address that as an inn, and I think it was just an oversight in that letter that Quaibone presented to the public as, as it being a bed and breakfast.
Yes, ma'am. And that's a legitimate mistake, but I feel like 90% of the other things that have been said about it have had the correct terminology, so.
And if I recall, you, the amenities in the rooms were small refrigerators and, and just a small, like a wet sink or something to that effect. It wasn't microwaves, and, and there wasn't any cooking, or?
I think there is a microwave in the room.
Okay, so like a mini fridge and, and microwave, it wasn't like a...
Exactly. And we're not allowed to have a kitchen, that would put it into a whole another health code services thing. So we'll probably have a little thing for coffee, and, you know, I don't even think we can cut an apple, as, as far as health code stuff goes, so you know.
Yeah, and I remember that discussion, is it being like just a mini, not even a kitchen, but just a...
Exactly.
A mini refrigerator.
A pantry-type area.
Not, yeah, a small closet.
Any further questions for Ms. Twitty? Thank you, Ms. Twitty.
Thank you.
I guess the other comment I would make is, I appreciate the information being brought forward, especially to the, I wasn't sitting back when it was voted on in 2014. However, it was approved, it can be built, it'll be proven or not. I guess we, as a county, and we just gotta make sure that, you know, it's, it's, if there's violations, or if it's not being, it was too rowdy and a lot of reports come in, we just need to make sure that we address them as a county.
Mr. Austin, Bob White's phone number is...
On the website.
It's on the website.
I just got one question. Like I said, I have no problem with being 12-bedroom, I understand I'm not wrong.
Put it up to the podium if you can.
If you would, yes, please, thank you.
I have no problem with being a 12-bedroom to a 10-bedroom, there's no difference there. The problem I have is, does this open the door, 'cause it sounds like it's approved already? Does this open the door for the community, to the others that have commercial property, to create hotels in the village? I mean, there's a future to this.
I think if it's zoned for that, they could come before the board and ask for it.
Yes. I mean, we've got, you know, it's a commercial entity, basically, and we have commercial entities within the village currently. And, you know, the, the hope, I guess, would be that anyone coming forward is gonna build something in conformity with what's going on there now. And that's why we put the small area plan in place for the village to deal with that. So, I don't think you're gonna get a 100-bedroom inn or anything like that, but, I mean, certainly someone else could come forward and...
But I'm just saying, down the road, you, you open the doors with each decision you make.
And, and for clarity, they can build a 10-bedroom as it sits.
Yes.
We're just changing the amount of bedrooms.
I don't have a problem with it being 12-bedroom. I understand the success of a business.
Right.
And they need those numbers, obviously. But I'm just saying, the whole thing was misleading, and I hope it gets caught on to sometime.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That, that's all I have. Signed up for public hearing. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this? With that, I'll close the public hearing, and I'll open the floor for a motion.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I will move to approve amended PB 13 dash 29 with staff recommended conditions, as noted on page nine in our packet, because it's consistent with the Corolla Village Small Area Plan, in that the project maintains desirable building style characteristics and architectural features that promote the character of Corolla Village, policy LU1, and promotes a small village feel by awarding the building entrance to the street, designed parking on the side, and incorporated front porches and pedestrian-oriented features, which is policy LU2. The request is reasonable and in the public interest, because the project provides diversity of lodging accommodations in the Corolla Village area, and a, and a vibrant village, got a little, well, promote the historic character and heritage of the area.
I second the motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passed unanimously. Moving on to new business, resolution authorizing contract buy-in between CT McCannell Incorporated and County of Currituck pursuant to NC General Statute 14 dash 234. With that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chair, I'd ask if I could be recused from this, since this is my company, and I don't feel it's right for me to be in here to have any comments or take a vote on this, since it will benefit by me.
Mr. Chairman, I make a mention that we allow Mr. Payment to be recused from this decision.
Second?
We have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passed unanimously. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. McCree.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to decided general statute, a county with no municipalities having population of 15,000 or more, may enter into contracts with members of the governing board upon certain conditions. First of all, the amount of the contract over the course of a 12-month period may not exceed $40,000. There must be a quarterly report publicly posted as to any monies expended under the contract with the contracting commissioner. And lastly, the commissioner may not vote on the resolution authorizing the contract. So Commissioner Payment has properly requested and been excused from consideration of this matter. This is not an unusual resolution or request. The county has previously, in the last 12 months, asked this board for and received approval for the county to enter into a contract with Commissioner Payment's business in order to do heating, air, and air conditioning repair for the county on an as-needed basis. Staff would recommend approval of this resolution, so that the county may then enter into a contract for the next 12 months with Commissioner Payments Company.
Thank you, Mr. McCree. Any questions for Mr. McCree? With that, open the floor for a motion.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passed unanimously.
Motion to make you wear, Mike, you made a motion you're gonna wear Bobby's jacket next week.
The blue one.
That's great.
Okay, moving on. Board appointments. Ms. Gilbert, did you have something?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we, as a, a county, have a seat on the Alba Moral Commission on rotating years for an at-large member, other than the elected officials to serve on the Alba Moral Commission. And I would like to appoint Elizabeth White for the term of, I think it's one year for the Alba Moral Commission. I've spoken with Ms. White, and she accepts that appointment. And I've also had the discussion with the executive board on the Alba Moral Commission. I'm the chairman of that board, and, and each one of them have identified that that's a good appointment. So I would, with that being said, I'd like to appoint Elizabeth White to the Alba Moral Commission to represent Currituck County.
I'll make a second there.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion passed unanimously. Any other board appointments? Moving on to consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, there are three that I would like to take and just bring a little bit of attention to, if I might. First one being, of course, resolution of the county board of commissioners opposing any change in the definition of a commercial fishing operation. We encourage to support our commercial fishermen, and we think the definition is there. They stood this test of time, and we wish it to remain the same as our resolution asked for. Another one that I would like to point out would be, of course, the Marcy's Law Proclamation. This is an advocacy organization statewide dedicated to guaranteeing the victims' rights and providing them a voice. And I commend the county for, you know, putting out this proclamation. And third, but not least, the retiring of the dog, Kiddo, from the K-9 Department, and finding a home for him with Deputy Jeremy Evans, I think is probably, I'm very proud of Mr., Deputy Evans. This has been his partner for a while, and he's a member of the family and community, and we wish him well in his retirement. With that, I would like to take, unless somebody else has anything else.
Just a, just a comment, that I think, I think it was unanimous throughout the board of commissioners here, as far as that opposition for the commercial fishing operation. I think everybody here supported the fishermen, and I think it was unanimous to get that done in a timely manner.
Yes.
I have a question about a budget amendment. The 11, $111,000 to replace beach patrol.
Mr. Scandell, do you want to discuss that? It's actually something we're going to discuss in the...
In the TDA.
In the TDA this evening.
To approve the money, but I want to know what we're spending $111,000 on.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I can go ahead. This particular budget amendment is, it's, it could be a bit confusing, 'cause it's showing up as, on the board of commissioners, but it's also showing as the TDA. It's in the TDA because we're making a recommendation to use OxyTax to fund this purchase. The purchase will actually be out of the general fund, so you're actually approving the budget amendment in your capacity right now as a board of commissioners, and then you'll be considering it as a TDA member for OxyTax. What this budget amendment's for is a request coming from the sheriff's department. As we went into the year, and we had conversations about whether we were doing a parking pass, or whether we were doing an access permit, the sheriff's department delayed replacing, they had side-by-side vehicles, gators, that they used last year to, or the last couple of years to patrol the beach. Those have become rusted and, and, and not in good condition, and the sheriff's department asked if, once a decision was made on which direction to go in, to be able to replace the, the assets that they use to patrol the four-wheel-drive area. So specifically, what it is requested is fund is to fund three Jeeps, three Jeeps and one UTV. In addition to the, the actual purchase, it's the cost of the equipment to put radio equipment, to put the, the public safety items on the vehicle that they normally do, with they have their patrol vehicles, the graphics, the, the lights, the sirens, and, and the things that support that. I have a further breakdown, if, if a commissioner wants to see it, but the sheriff, now that we are moving forward with a parking pass consideration, they felt like the, the ATVs, it's an open, open environment vehicle, after all the years, the deputies have made a request that they could have a, a very basic four-wheel-drive Jeep, to where they have the ability to have air conditioning, they have the elements, if they have somebody that they do need to transport, they have the ability to transport them, versus putting them... them, next to them in ATV. And with now going to the direction we're going in, the Jeeps will actually let them patrol more efficiently over a wider area, and this was a recommendation from the Sheriff's Department. And again, I have that breakdown, if commissioners would like to see that.
So we're replacing all of our equipment that's used over on the outer banks?
The, the equipment that was used to patrol the beach strand, yes.
I would suggest that in the future, we don't replace all of it at one time. I think that's a big expense, when people look at it, $111,000.
And these vehicles will be for the beach. I won't be seeing them over in Moay out particularly.
Correct. As it was described to me, these vehicles are specifically used to patrol the beach strand, so they will only be on the beach strand. They will not be used to patrol any other area than, than the beach.
So they'll stay on the beach?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any further questions or comments about the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I actually have one, a point of clarification that I would like to ask Commissioner Beaumont. He is the, the Board Representative on the Fire Advisory Board, and I believe in, in a conversation that we had, and for clarification, in your consent agenda, you have three requests from the Crawford Volunteer Fire Department. The last one in the package, I believe, is for a piece of equipment. And the point of clarification, I think there was a conversation that before the Volunteer Fire Department went to a financial institution to borrow money, that their first attempt would be discuss with the county the possibility of doing an interloan with the county, and I believe that's what, you made so much clarification with that, so that when, when and if this is approved, that if the county had the ability to do the financing with the Volunteer Fire Department, that they would be, work with us first. We might be able to provide a, a better rate, and I believe that was-
That is, that is a correct summary of that conversation.
Okay.
Any further questions or statements or comments about the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion of approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-motion passed unanimously. Moving on to Commissioner's report. Commissioner Hall?
Again, I think you spoke very well on it. Many times, we, people see things in the paper, or they hear room or control, or whatever it might be called, and when it came to the beach parking passes, nothing was set in stone. This was all looking for information. I think, you know, nothing was designated to where we had to do it. We weren't excluding anybody from commenting on the process. It has not been set to be starting tomorrow or anything, so there is still time for comments or anything else. We're still, it's a work in progress. Am I correct, Mr. Commissioner?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Well, I was gonna get into the four-by-four beach parking permit thing, but Mike just stole all my thunder on that one, so I forgot nothing.
Mr. Beaumont?
Nothing here.
Ms. Etheridge?
Nothing.
Ms. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that Commissioner Hennig and I attended the Moyoc Fire Department Awards Ceremony recently, and I just commend each one of the persons that are a part of our fire departments and our emergency services. It's amazing to see the hours of volunteer and training that is put into their jobs, and I just, I was just blown away, really, on, on the awards that some of these young folks received, and, and I just, I can't commend them enough, and I would encourage, again, if you're interested in getting into the fire department emergency management, to please get involved with the fire departments. This Saturday, the lower Currituck Fire Department is having their awards banquet, and I'm looking forward to attending that and, and seeing the, sorry. Oh, sorry?
It's okay.
I'm just excited about it, because it's just, it's just great things, and, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Flora are here in the audience, and they've put a lot of time and energy in, in the, in the history of the Moyoc Fire Department, so I just, and they're continuing to, to give back to the community, so I just want to thank you on that. And then, on Saturday night, I had the opportunity to attend the White Out for Hunger that was sponsored by the Moyoc women, and just an exceptional turnout, and I can't publicly say the amount that was raised for the food pantry in the county, but it was a significant amount of money that was raised. And again, I just want to thank each and everybody that participated and contributed to that effort. Again, just, it's just heartwarming to see how much everybody in the county works for each other.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Payment?
Just, I can't top that. Ms. Gilbert pretty much covered it all.
She's pretty good at that code.
Yeah. No, I don't. Now, I was gonna talk about our fire department, lower Currituck, but that's okay. Saturday night, yes, we're gonna have our banquet there, and all the commissioners were invited, so I hope to see everyone there. But just, while we're talking about the fire department, just please remember, the fire department's volunteer, they, they mean a lot to our community. You know, we support them. As citizens out there, anytime you get a chance to thank them for what they do, or get involved, just remember them out there, and all our first responders. I mean, it, it's a lot, and don't think just because you want to get involved with the fire department that you gotta go inside and put out a fire. That's, there's many more things you can do with, for the fire departments. They, they have a lot of needs, they got a lot of areas that you can help out with, so if you just want to get involved for a little bit, just contact your local department, talk to them a little bit, tell them what you like to do, and I'm sure they'll find something for you to go as far as you want to go, so. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna expand on Commissioner Gilbert's comments about the Moyoc Fire Department. There was a gentleman there, a pretty young gentleman, that had 3,800 volunteer hours at the Moyoc Fire Station. Remarkable, and I apologize to him publicly. I do not remember his name, but it was really neat to go there. I had a conversation with Mr. Preveer, the chief there. The motivation and the camaraderie that, what goes on there is truly special, and I really believe that comes from the top down. So my hat goes off to, to the, the folks that lead these volunteer programs. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of dedication, and they're all a special group of folks. So, yeah, if you get a minute, thank them. We'd be in a bind without them for sure, and that's all I have. Moving on to County Manager's report.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a comment on the, the parking pass. My staff spent a significant portion of today answering phone calls from property owners and residents concerned. They, they saw the article in the local paper, and there wasn't a whole lot of detail, and so it took up a good part of the day. The vast majority of the request was related to the fee, and so although we are in the draft process, and we're putting that language together, and it's certainly staff's intention to have that back in front of this board for your consideration at your next meeting, my direction, as I understand it from the board and the conversations we've had, is that much like our current ATV permits, if you have a vehicle registered in Currituck County, or you are a property owner in Currituck County, there will not be a fee assessed against you or your property for the ability to park and use the beaches. That the, the main focal point of the conversation with that ordinance was to address those that we welcome to our beaches that perhaps don't on a regular basis contribute to the local economy, and to specifically target that kind of usage versus the folks that are already taxpayers in our county. So hopefully that message gets out, and, and tomorrow, our phones will ring just a little bit less than they did today. Thank you.
That includes folks that rent their homes here in Currituck County, long-term rents, because I'm not talking about the weekly.
If, the property owners, as my understanding, the property owners will be entitled to permits, parking permits or parking passes at no fee. They'll have to get a pass or permit, but there'll be no fee associated with it.
Right. Thank you for the clarity, Mr. Scanlon. With that, I'll recess the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and convene a special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority, and I will hand that over to Mr. Scanlon.
Mr. Chairman, you have, in your capacity as the TDA, there are three budget amendments that we are putting in front of you for your consideration. The first one, for 24, $2,450. Unfortunately, the, we did experience some damage to the new restrooms that were constructed when we had the week-plus of cold weather. We had a water pipe that, that burst in that building and did cause some damage. We have a, the amount of the damage is underneath our deductible, and that's why it is not an insurance claim, so we're asking funds to be placed in repairs and maintenance to address that concern or that issue. We are also asking some monies to put in to evaluate the HVAC system. I think that was discussed at the retreat. And the last one is the, the budget amendment that we just talked about was to provide the funding for the assets the Sheriff's Department is asking to support her role in enforcing the rules and regulations on the beach strand. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have about any one of these three.
Any questions for Mr. Scanlon? With that, open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion for approval.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-motion passed unanimously. With that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn the special meeting of the Tourism Development Authority.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. And with that, we will, I will entertain a motion to move into closed session pursuant to GS 143-318.11A3 to consult with County Attorney, and in order to preserve County Attorney-client privilege.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing non-motion passed unanimously. Thank you all for coming this evening.
You're welcome.